Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome. It is the February 1st, 2021 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We have all five committee members in attendance this evening, and we have some minutes for approval. If I could have a motion, please.
Move to approve the January 4th, 2021 executive session meeting minutes.
A second?
Motion made by Bill and second by Beth. Discussion. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Next.
Move to approve the January 4th, 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second?
Second by Anna Noah. Discussion. Hearing none, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And one more, please.
I'll move to accept the January 19th, 2021, meeting minutes, or yeah, regular meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. Hearing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. Okay, we have arrived at an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Those of you watching via Zoom may raise your hand now if you wish to speak. This is your time. And Mr. Mackey, we have one, one hand up. Hello, John. When you're ready, if you can come off mute. Go ahead.
I just, just got it there. Thank you. My name is John Chase. I'm the pastor in New Life Church in East Long Meadow on Westwood Avenue. And I just wanted to kind of give a little update on where we are as far as in-school learning. Before, when you were making the decision, I had the privilege of speaking to you about the need, our desire for our boys to be back in school. My wife Erin and I adopted Gabriel and Michael through DCF about seven years ago. They're in fourth grade at Maple Shade. And of course, going through the foster care system, they were victims of some pretty horrible abuse and trauma. When the learning at home took place, well, Mr. Fredette and his team did a phenomenal job. But it was obvious that it was wearing on our sons, and it was beginning to affect their development. Because of the trauma that they've experienced, there are a lot of triggers, and there's a lot of things going on with them. Wonderful little boys. They're twins. You can't separate them. We'll go in in the morning, and they have their own beds, but they'll be in the same bed together. And they've, they've been with each other every day of their lives. They're the only constant they've had. So when the opportunity to go back to live school opened up, we were big proponents of it. I trust you as a school committee. I trust Mr. Smith in his leadership, and I trust Mr. Fredette and the way he leads the school. I've observed it over the last, while the boys were in third grade, and I'm just incredibly impressed. I'm an older guy. I've already had kids. I've got kids in their late 30s. I have six grandchildren. So this is the second time around the block for me. So I see things a little bit with different eyes. And I'm just incredibly impressed with the setup that they had in school, and very thankful that you made the decision to open up this for us again. The boys started, they were in Cohort A, and their first week, I'm going to tell you, without a doubt, the change in my sons, the first day back in school, was visible and obvious. That first week they were in school, the second week they were at home, the change in being back home was visible and obvious. Thankfully, the system has opened up Cohort D. Both of my sons are now eligible for Cohort D, and we've put them both in it because the way school is now in-person is absolutely the best option for our boys. I know not everybody agrees with that. I know a lot of families feel it's best for them, and I respect that. I appreciate that completely. But I just want to say thank you so much for your decision for my sons to be back in school live. It has made, I can't, I can't adequately, adequately express or quantify to you the difference that it has made in my sons. Chokes me up a little bit. I apologize. And the help that it is providing them. Two little boys who didn't have a lot of hope several years ago, and now town that I've grown up in, lived here since 1977, is providing an amazing resource for them to be back in school in such an incredible time. So I thank you so much for your time, and thank you for the honor of being able to speak.
Thank you, Pastor Chase. I appreciate you speaking tonight, and certainly glad that your, your boys are finding success. We're happy to hear that. Thank you so much for talking tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more hands, we will move forward in our agenda. We have a chance for committee and subcommittee, excuse me, subcommittee communications. Anybody this evening?
Yeah. The, as you may or may not know, but CTEC over at the collaborative has been operating on a hybrid schedule since roughly October, where the CTEC students are in four days a week with Wednesday being a fully remote day. And they produced their first student of the month awards for January. And we have several students from East Long Meadow that were, were recipients of these awards. Matthew Mayer for Carpentry I, Nicholas Gower for Information Support Services and Networking I, Kristen O'Brien for Landscaping Tech Technology and Horticultural II, and Christopher Bowden for Machine Technology II. Congratulations to all those students.
Nice.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to them as well. Anybody else?
I just had a question about committees. Can I ask it now?
Sure.
I was wondering when we might get an update from the committee that's working on the social media policy? Just knowing that we still have a lot of conversation happening out in the public eye, and that we still have members of our ELPS community involved in that. So just want to make sure that while we do have quite a bit on our plates, that we don't lose sight of that, so that we're continuing to work together to move our, our district forward around a common mission. So I wasn't sure when we can expect to see that come back to this committee.
That group has a meeting right after the February break, meeting collectively, and hopefully start to have some ideas from there. We'll bring them back to this committee.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. We have our first presentation, 5.1.1. We have a discussion on local health data. I don't know if you, do you want to start off with it, Gordon, and then bring in our guests? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I think we have Kelly Lehmmbard and Amy Petrosy also here. They may have just gone off camera for a moment, but one of the things that I know people have called and asked about, and you know, want to not only present here, but also give folks the webpage where they can find what we report to DESI. We report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education the positive cases that are in the schools each Wednesday. So today's Wednesday. I reported today, and it would have run any identified positive case from basically January 27th to February 3rd. And so what that looked like for ELPS was at Meadowbrook, we had a staff positive and two students positive. At Maple Shade, we had two students who tested positive and one staff. Mountain View, we did not have any positives within that timeframe. One of the things that is interesting to note, as I was looking at our spreadsheets, is that the voluntary request to do, for everyone to do a self-inventory around symptoms each day seems to be working because we're recording when people have done this, because obviously if they've decided that they may have some symptoms, they're then going either to their primary care and getting tested, or starting with their primary care and getting directions from there, and then can come back after they either had a negative test, or the primary care physician has diagnosed it as something else. And so that's happening, which is good to see, because that, if everybody's doing their part, that's what keeps us all safe. And so that, that was something that I was seeing in the spreadsheets. Finishing off, the school's report this week. At Berchland, we had a student who was positive, and at the high school, we had three students who were positive. So total staff-student was 10. Interesting part is, we're looking at all of these, is that so far, we're seeing that the exposure still is happening outside the district. Now what we have to really monitor is, in each of those cases, where the close contacts were, who have all been identified, and spoken to our nursing staff, as well as probably Amy, and see where they are, because obviously they're quarantining right now. And so far, knock on wood, we're not seeing the close contacts starting to turn into positive cases. And so that's what we have to look at really closely and make sure that that continues. The report that I just gave all of you, I send to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and then they populate a spreadsheet. So if you go to the website, we can probably put the link up on our webpage, and you go to their COVID section, you just go down a series of links, and it says, "Positive Cases in Schools." And then you can find every school district actually that is reporting. The difference between what they're reporting now and what they're reporting in the fall is that we now are, are into the hybrid model, and so our cases are actually showing up when I report them in the spreadsheet. Because we were predominantly remote, even though we had about 160 to 165 students coming every day in the fall, I would still report our positive cases, but they didn't make the spreadsheet because the district was considered predominantly remote. So now that's a much more accurate spreadsheet representing what we're reporting each week. That might be a good segue. Actually, if Amy has stats for the entire town, she can, she can start to provide that.
Sure, I can do that, Gordon. Thank you. So I'll do, I'll kind of give the rundown of the age brackets, but I'm sure people are most concerned with the pediatric cases. And I'll use December and January as the two most recent complete data sets. So in December, we had 44, 0 to 19. We had 146 in the age bracket of 20 to 50, and at 51 plus, we had 161. Approximately 25 of those were in our facilities, so not community-based. So we're still seeing the majority, the vast majority of our cases being community-based transmission and not facility-based transmission like it was in the spring. So in January, we had a slight bump up in the pediatric numbers. So in January, 0 to 19 was 54 cases. 20 to 50 was 124 cases, and 51 plus was 110 cases. So just a, this is a slight bump there in the pediatric cases. And, you know, Gordon, just to echo what you said, we are, we, you know, they've all, people have only been in school for a couple of weeks now. And when we talked back in December, while the time really just flies, we knew that because of our community transmissions, that our biggest job was to prevent in-school transmission. And we are seeing, Gordon just gave you the cases, we are seeing that people within our school community are positive. But so far, and we track this very detailed, so far, we have been able to properly identify and quarantine and isolate positive individuals, so there has not been any school-based transmission. There are two reasons for that, but I would say, one is parents have been really great about identifying, even before I get the reports, that their student is, or teachers or staff, that they are positive, and sharing those close contacts. So we're able to quickly remove those students from the general population. I think you guys going on a week on, week off has also really helped versus the, what some community has done with an AA and a BB. Because a lot of times, once we identify the positive, those students are going to be out anyways. So we're not under a vast, like a really quick, under the gun to identify these kids and get them out of the the school, because we have, we have some time based on that schedule. So I think, you know, that, that's a model that I think is really working in our favor. And I think also the collaboration that exists between Kelly, myself, and the other school nurses. When those cases come in to me, we're able to communicate really quickly. There was one case where we did not know, we were able to isolate those, some individuals out of the building really quickly. So I think the systems that we have in place to identify and remove positive students in faculty, as well as close contacts, is working, and the schools' mechanisms that they have for masking, hand washing, and social distancing are also working, or we would see a lot more school-based transmission.
Amy, you talked about January, or excuse me, December and January numbers, and we had discussed as, as we were moving forward, we knew there would be this post-holiday spike, and it appears now that numbers, at least nationwide, are starting to recede slightly. Are we seeing that also in East Long Meadow, or is this?
I don't want to be too excited, but yeah, we are. We're seeing some really great numbers in the last two weeks. It may not even be read this week. They come out tomorrow, and I never know the official numbers until I know how many people have been tested. But our numbers, yesterday, we had two cases. And that, I mean, there were days where we were getting 30 in a day. So seeing two cases, I think we have, I wanted to be hopeful that we have seen the end of that holiday surge, and that we're now moving into some kind of stability. Not that we want to see any cases, but 30 cases in a day and two cases in a day is a great change, and I hope it stays that way.
Can I ask a quick question, Amy? I was wondering, when the state goes and puts out their, their numbers, like I know that you kind of clumped together with three groups for today's presentation, but when the state goes and they, they put out their little thing, they always do 0 to 19, which is 20 years worth of data. And then they do like the 20 to 29, and they break it into like decades. Why do they clump, do you know why they clump the young kids? Because there's such a disparity between an infant and like kids who are 16, 17, 18, 19. What? Do they ever break up those numbers? Because like, from a school system perspective, although hopefully things will go down from here, that's important data for us to know, like bringing it down by grade level almost. Do they ever do that?
They don't, and I don't do that. I follow the 0 to 19 demographic. Because that's, that's a pediatric.
You know, an infant is completely different than an 18-year-old. But it's like.
I see that, but our students aren't also in isolation, right? So you could have a 12-year-old in school and also a two-year-old in daycare. So we're looking really at that, that age, that pediatric demographic. I mean, we could, we could look at, I mean, for the next meeting, I could break it down by kind of 0 to 5, 5 to 10.
Problems with spikes in the future, we'll worry about it. But I just thought that was interesting that they, instead of just doing it like 0 to 5, and then like from 5 to 10 and 10 and up, you know, I just always wondered why, because it makes it look like so many more students, so many more kids have COVID. But it's 20 years worth of data as opposed to every other demographic is 10, and it's scary to look at that. You know, you think parents are sending their kids into school, they're thinking, wow, but that's, you know, a lot more kids. All right, I was just curious if you knew anything.
Our numbers for East Long Meadow are done very differently. So we're 0 to 19, so all the pediatric age, and then 20 to 50. So I really tried to break up the older group as people who could live in those long-term care facilities, or were receiving at-home services, so we could see if, if it's the home health aides that are bringing this into people, like where is that demographic getting it? And then that kind of middle-aged group. You know, I kept it this way. If, if I had, if I were to do it again differently, I might break that 20 to 50 down a little bit, because that 20 to 30 demographic, I think, skews that data a little bit. But for our sake, that 0 to 19 isn't remarkably greater in number than like a 20 to 50.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Kelly, wondering now that we're two and a half weeks in, any thoughts on how the, it's actually going on the ground with the rest of your nursing staff? Thoughts on the first two and a half weeks?
Well, I think they're doing an awesome job. You know, whenever we get the call, if it's at night after school, we take the call and we, you know, identify the close contacts and start the, the phone calls. So like today, I got two positive cases that we had already known about them. So that was really nice. And everybody's doing a great job. They're, you know, not, they're just doing what they know needs to be done. So it's really nice. And with Amy's help, and actually, I made my first call to CTC today. So we're just learning, every day we learn something new, and we're just, you know, developing best practices.
And you mentioned contact tracing. It's, it's fair to say that when we do get a positive case and we need to contact trace, that if families are not receiving contact from the school or from Amy's department, then, then they can assume that they're not a direct contact. We spoke of the, that it's shown up, but if you, if you haven't heard, then you're not a close contact, and I, just worth reiterating, I think.
Right. So, you know, we're, we're being as safe as we can, but if you haven't heard, then we've not identified you as a close contact.
Probably also a good opportunity to plug the fact that, and we both alluded to it, you know, as families see their kids possibly coming down with symptoms, you know, err on the side of caution, keep them home. If they're co-mingling in other pods, you know, I've heard you should assume that everybody has it, so that, you know, if you show sweet distance, you wear a mask. That's how you would ensure your safety and slow the spread down. So just, again, things worth reiterating.
Yeah, and one important thing is if you are waiting for a test, you should just be at home, you know, don't go to school, don't go to sports. And when we find out, and if it's safe and you have a negative, then, you know, you can return. But just staying home while you're waiting, which can be hard.
Yeah. It's nice to see that that's happening, both with our families and our staff. Everybody's taking that part very seriously, doing the self-inventory, and if they have symptoms, you know, then staying home, connecting with their primary care, and usually getting a test. And they can still.
Amy, where's the? Go ahead, Gordon.
I was just going to say, and they can still connect to their classes remotely, which is, is a great benefit.
Amy, just wondering for families and staff out there, best place for tests these days, still Eastfield Mall, Stop the Spread sites?
Yeah, the Stop the, the Stop the Spread sites are still getting the best turnaround time. We are, I am hearing reports even just today that pediatricians are, if there's a positive in the household, that pediatricians are just saying, oh, consider them a positive. And so I really am trying to work with the parents, because not only does DPH really want these students tested, but also it's in their best interest, because if they become a close contact in three weeks, they don't have to isolate or quarantine, because once you're tested positive, you have a 90-day window where you don't have to quarantine. You're not considered in a, in a danger spot. So by parents getting that lab confirmation, their students will have a better opportunity to continue the routines that they're developing within the schools than if they were not, because without that lab, suspected positives are not something that would remove them from the need to quarantine.
Amy, last, when we spoke last, we briefly talked about the extra sports season that MIA is trying to put together, including football, wrestling, cheerleading. Those obviously removed because they're higher contacts, closer proximity, greater risk, I guess, you would say for spread. How, how do we go about making a decision whether or not we should allow those sports to happen next month? Any thoughts?
Yeah. DPH is really tracking this data. They really want to know, there are certain sports that just are a much higher risk for transmission. Hockey is one of them. The, if you look at the clusters that are formed around certain sports, hockey is by far and large the number-one cluster that is formed around a sporting event. Basketball is something else that they're also watching, and there is a distinction between like a skills and drills basketball program versus gameplay, because there's also a lot more interaction with gameplay. DPH, I believe, releases this information, but if, if you guys are looking for it kind of on the state level, on the, the big level, I'm happy to kind of provide that to you.
Okay. Yeah, as we go forward, we'll have to discuss further and make a decision on that. So thank you for that, as you track that. Any other questions from the committee? Kelly, was still doing well on PPE, plenty of that still in the buildings? You're just on mute, Kelly.
Sorry. What we're asking is that people tell us when they get low so that we can order more, but so far, so good. We still have lots of PPE left.
Students are wearing appropriate masks at the school?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We didn't hear that question.
Yeah, I just asked if students, are you finding that students are wearing proper masks? They're, they're the ones they bring to school?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. Excellent. Okay. Well, we certainly appreciate both of your time. As always, we rely heavily on your input and your expertise. So thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to catching up with you both again soon.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night. Thank you both. Okay, from there, we're going to jump into our, just an update on our learning model. As we do every meeting that we have, we try to bring any new updates about how things are going in our learning model. Mr. Smith, you want to start off with that?
Sure. So we're into, as people have mentioned, I think Kelly said it, we're into our third week of the hybrid model. So Cohort A and Cohort D are in this week. So we've been through two full weeks with each Cohort A or B going through that. And it's great to see, not only with our in-person folks, but also our remote learners, that we're still across the district averaging 97.9% attendance. Breaking that down, over those two weeks, we had 97.7% at Meadowbrook, 98.4% at Maple Shade, 98.05% at Mountain View. Berchland had 97.25%, and the high school was at 98.17%, which was really great to see. This week, obviously, it's a little bit changed as the weather threw a curveball at us, but you know, I think people have adjusted. We're still connecting, and that seems to be going really well. We have through the last two weeks and are still dealing with some technology issues, and so IT has been with us, you know, basically shoulder to shoulder, trying to figure out those situations. In some cases, we're doing some hard wiring to solve some of the issues of either dropping a class suddenly, or sort of overwhelming a computer in a classroom. The other thing, which is going to take a little bit longer, but we're moving as quickly as we can, is we may start renewing staff computers over the next few weeks to make sure that we have a computer that can handle all the different devices. So we're coming at the different, the different issues with a few different possible solutions, and hopefully we'll have those resolved so that everybody's connecting in-person, remote, and the teachers can actually just get into instruction and not worry about technical difficulties. Um, and the teachers can actually just get into instruction and not worry about technical difficulties, so to speak. So we're working on that. Um, transportation, uh, currently is going very well. Uh, we have approximately three hundred and seventy-three students who are riding. Uh, and we're also preparing for the fact that, uh, we have a significant number of students in that C cohort who would be eligible to ride. Um, students, uh, in grades K through six, who are two miles or more from their school, are eligible to ride. Um, and so we're looking, looking at that and figuring out, okay, how do we start to, one, prepare for March first? Because families are, um, looking to, if they're looking to come in, they're sending their school a request to come in from cohort C to cohort A or B. And, um, we will be then reaching out to families to let them know that they're eligible for bus transportation. We're also looking closely at, we realize that obviously there are families with siblings, um, who may be in that K to six range, but also have siblings who may be in that seven to twelve range. And so we're looking pretty closely at that. And are we able to safely invite, um, say, at Berchland, if you look at that, um, six, seven, and eight, two miles or more, you're talking about another two hundred and twenty-four students. Um, and then if you look at the high school and go nine through twelve, um, two miles or more out, you have about three hundred and fifty-two students. And so what we wanna do is plot that out. And as we approach March first, if we can offer that transportation safely, we'd like to do that. Um, and so we're, we're plotting that out now and preparing to see who's going to choose to come in and march, um, who may have been in the C cohort prior to March first.
I just, if I could just add really quick, I, I, and I know that we can't offer the busing traditionally and all that kind of stuff. But if there is any type of avail, but I know families who want to come back. But say, for instance, their students are at Berchland, and there's no way for those students to, maybe they could get them to school, they cannot get them home, because they'd have to leave work. They're old enough to be home for a certain period of time, they might have older siblings. So certainly, as you're moving through, if you could think of, whether it's a lottery process or something, if you get any extra spots that are available, I, I'd like them to be considered, uh, to be put up there. Because I do know at least two families that wanna come back. But it's, it's the busing that's the problem. A parent just can't leave work in the middle, at two o'clock in the afternoon, to pick up a kid, to bring them home, and, and that's, and then that's where there's, so if you do get to the point where you think you have space, even if you can open it up on a lottery basis, think about that, okay?
And yes, I, I certainly, we would wanna do that. Um, so we're looking, we know the, the ridership, I guess, that's, uh, eligible in that two miles and out, that'd be the two hundred and twenty-four, three hundred and fifty-two. If we can expand through that safely and possibly add more, we, you know, certainly can look at, um, the, that lottery approach. You're, you're muted, Beth. Um, but if families are struggling, you know, even if right now we are, um, unable to put them immediately on a bus, let us know that. I mean, that's something we've always worked with our families, um, through all sorts of different challenges, and, and wanna continue to do so.
Okay.
The key, yeah, the key to all of this is, can we do this safely? So that, yes, we're transporting to and from, but as they're on the bus, can we put in all the, um, safety requirements to make sure that we're not putting anyone at risk as they ride, uh, the bus?
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Um, that basically is the update for the, you know, the last two weeks into this week. Uh, we're really happy with the attendance. Uh, we're working through the technology challenges. And as we just finished discussing, um, looking at how we can increase the, the option of transportation for more families.
Yeah, and it totally, uh, certainly my, my two daughters are happy to be back and, and getting some in-person learning. Um, and I've heard that from other families, so I, I'm, I'm glad it's going well. And I know that the staff is still focusing on, on those that are at home, too. So it, uh, it's a transitional time still, and I, and we hit a lot of glitches. I know there was a lot of slow internet, dropping things, but, uh, we'll continue to try to address those, uh, issues as we move forward. Uh, but so far, so good. So thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay, so we will move on then. Uh, we have item five point one point three, which is the East Long Meadow Public School Master Plan Visioning Session, which is February thirteenth.
Yes, so, um, Mrs. Blair and I are on the, um, Master Planning Committee for the town. Uh, and so this is a group that's looking to update and put a new master plan for the town in place. And, um, they're putting together, sponsoring, uh, an exciting, um, opportunity for all town residents, uh, from ten to twelve on February thirteenth. They can log in and take part in this visioning session and start to look at what, what in the future do we want the town of East Long Meadow to look like and provide for its residents? Uh, and so I think that's gonna be a, a pretty impressive event. And we hope to have a large, um, group participate and then take that information into the master planning. So I wanted to not only let people know about it, um, in this setting, but also, uh, we'll share this out through the schools, um, through the various communication, um, avenues, whether it be Blooms, or the portals, or, um, email. So something that, uh, hopefully many town residents will take part in, ten AM to twelve PM on February thirteenth, Saturday, February thirteenth.
Okay. Any questions on that?
What I heard, it's a very worthwhile endeavor.
Certainly well overdue for a new master plan. I remember working on one probably twelve years ago, and
A long time ago.
Maybe fifteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
A while ago.
Right. Um, all right. So moving forward, we have an update on, uh, this year's MCAS schedule.
And so Ms. Brown is here with us, and, um, the, the state has, uh, made a number of changes, may also make more to their assessment schedule, uh, as they continue to work with the legislature, and then really the federal government, because some of this is rooted in, um, the accountability system is rooted in both state and federal laws. Uh, but there are changes to this schedule, and, and Ms. Brown can walk us through those.
Sure. Um, so MCAS is going to still happen, but there have, like Mr. Smith said, some changes. Um, so there'll be, uh, longer testing windows, so that districts have time to test students, because we have this hybrid schedule. And so, uh, principals are currently working on these schedules, and, and folks will be informed of those. Um, they've also, for high school students, where they used to require them to take the tests in concurrent days, because again, of the hybrid situation, that's no longer the case. Um, and, um, for the three through eighth students, uh, they're gonna reduce the amount of time students are gonna have to be on the MCAS. They're using something that they're calling a session sampling approach. So they'll only have to take a portion of each MCAS assessment. So instead of taking two sessions of ELA and two sessions of math, and for fifth graders and eighth graders, the science, they'll only take one session of each. Um, and then there have been some, uh, modifications to the competency determination, as well for the seniors who, um, need the MCAS to graduate. Um, so coming up, the high school will have their biology MCAS for ninth graders before and after, um, February break. And then, um, in April through May will be the, uh, ELA, math, and, uh, science and technology MCAS for third through eighth grades. Um, and then the window for, uh, the tenth grade and eleventh grade, uh, MCAS will be between May eighteenth and twenty-seventh. And that's because the, the eleventh grade weren't able to take the MCAS last year. And then it's optional for twelfth grade, obviously, who, um, if they've already passed, they don't have to take it. Um, and they'll be taking the next gen MCAS. Um, not that they have been offering the legacy, but our, our students will be taking the next gen, the, the newer MCAS. And then access testing for ELLs has also been extended. And usually it, it's already, um, kind of wrapping up now, and they've extended that to, um, close to the end of the year, May twentieth. So, uh, the ELL teachers are working on their schedules for that as well.
Can I ask what's happening with the current tenth graders who didn't take a science MCAS last year?
That is a great question. And I'm gonna have to look into that, because I don't remember seeing any information on that, whether they have to do that or not. I'm sure Mr. Page is on top of it, so, um, I will get back to you on that.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think, I thought that there was like a biology MCAS, but then there's also a chemistry-based MCAS.
So we usually take the biology. There's also a physics.
Um, but I don't know if maybe, if, if they're going to need it for graduation. And historically, our tenth graders are taking chemistry. Maybe they could offer them that.
That's a good point.
But maybe they don't want them, maybe they don't have to take it at all, and that's even better. So, okay. Yeah, I'd just be curious.
We have had over the, um, sort of the history of state assessment, we have had some students take the chemistry. Um, so we can, we obviously wanna put the students in the best possible situation and take that assessment. So we can look into both.
And that's one thing I forgot to mention. So the kids that are taking biology this semester, because it's a semester-based program in high school, are the ones taking it before and after February break. And then the state's allowing a June testing as well. And so our students who are taking, um, uh, biology second semester will be taking it then. So it'll be fresh in everyone's minds.
Okay. Any other questions on the MCAS for this year?
And just, um, to confirm, the tests have to take place in school. The state is not offering an at-home testing option, correct?
Right. Yeah, they do have to come in. Yeah, so that's, I think, one of the, um, reasons why they're relaxing the
Flexible.
consecutive or concurrent tests at school, so that schools dealing with hybrid models can actually get students in.
Are they gonna be reducing, um, I'm just thinking, the seniors this year? If they don't get the opportunity to take, is it still gonna be graduation requirement? Or I heard word that it might not be, but then it is, but then it isn't?
They're modifying the competency determinations. Um, so they can pass an approved course to demonstrate competency in that, that subject in lieu of a qualifying MCAS score.
So like if they pass biology, they don't have to ta- I'm using as an example, or?
Yeah, it's more around the English
ELA and mathematics.
ELA and math. Um, and it's the, the similar change that they made last year. So all of our students who, um, have not passed on the ELA or math are taking a math course and an, uh, English course. And so the key is, we have to, for those students, just demonstrate that they have passed those courses and send that information, uh, prior to graduation to, uh, through the DESI portal.
Oh, they trust us. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good discussion on that. Thank you so much. We will move forward. We have a FY twenty-one second quarter financial report update. And Pam, I believe this is in your port.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. So, um, attached is a spreadsheet, um, that is designed as a financial update for the FY twenty-one school budget, the operational budget, as well as your grants and your, uh, revolving accounts. This is your second quarter. I can't believe we're already here. It's gone by very fast. Um, so this is as of December thirty-first, uh, two thousand and twenty. If you go to page four, uh, you will see that all of your salary accounts are on the top section of that page. And, um, so, you know, right at the top, we have athletic to the pretty significant balance there. Of course, the, um, athletics, um, the employees are paying throughout the year, so there's always gonna be that balance there. Um, the medical staff, there's, um, a significant balance there as well. And of course, with COVID, um, I'm still analyzing all of these accounts, as you can imagine. Um, you know, from custodians to paraprofessionals, you're gonna see balances in, in all of these accounts. And they're, um, they're really due to, uh, unencumbered salaries, unfilled vacancies, and unpaid leave of absence. Um, so it's kind of a combination of, um, all of those things. And what I will say is that we have a healthy balance there, so I don't have any concerns. I wanted to bring to your attention that I did set up a new account called the, um, the COVID salary expense, so that if there was anything that I needed to pay for that was COVID-related and could not be funded under the grant for some reason, that I would be able to still track that. So those are expenditures, um, there, and I believe that those are, um, uh, food service, um, employees that cannot fall under the grant. Um, but food service, when we get to that point, we'll see, needs a little bit of our help this year. Do we have any questions on the salary section? Okay. On the bottom section of that spreadsheet, you'll see this is your, um, expense side of the budget, and, which is the smaller side, because, um, about twenty-six million is our salaries, and more like five million is our expense side. You will see that there, um, is, again, I had to set up a COVID PPE expenditure, um, line there, which we've expended, um, three thousand one twenty-four. I am hopeful that I will be able to do a journal entry to a grant eventually, once I, um, go through all those budgets, okay? Um, mostly, you're gonna see a higher, uh, contracted services balance, as well as educational supplies. Obviously, just coming back, um, into the hybrid, you're gonna see these gradually be expended. That's my, um, anticipa- anticipation. Um, so do I have any questions on the expense side? No? And at the very bottom there, just to remind everyone, our budget for this year is thirty-one million, five ninety-four, zero eight nine. To date, as of December thirty-first, we have expended eleven million, three fifty-six, nine nine eight. We've encumbered seventeen million, seven fifty-four, two eighty-one, with a remaining balance at this point, two million, four eighty-two, eight ten. So what I do, will say is that the budget is fiscally sound, and I have no concerns at this point in time. However, I hope you know that I'll continue to monitor all these accounts and bring any of my concerns to your attention. Well, then we can move on to the grants and revolving, on page five. At the top of the page are your grants. And, um, as you recall, we did roll over some FY twenty grants into this fiscal year. You're gonna see there's still some balances there, so I'm working on expending those funds down. And they will be expended by the next quarter. Um, then you're gonna see your FY twenty-one grants, uh, the Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDEA. All of these are being expended down on a regular basis, uh, special ed, early childhood grant. Then we get to the, the new grant, which was the CBRF grant, which stands for Coronavirus Relief Fund. That, uh, that grant has been fully expended at this point. It was originally supposed to be expended by December thirtieth. And then I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, like a week before the deadline, then they bumped it out. But we had already fully expended that, that grant anyway. So now we're just beginning to expend the ESAR grant, which is that next line. ESAR grant stands for Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund Grant. And, uh, this one is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight fifty-seven, and that will help us, um, cover some of these leave of absence, um, coverages, and the permanent building subs that we've put in place, which I hear, um, is a great success. Correct, Mrs. Smith? Yeah.
So it's been very successful, because there, as we were talking about, um, that self-inventory piece, that happens daily. And then you have to, uh, provide coverage pretty quickly. Uh, and so the, the permanent building subs, having them available at each building has been hugely successful.
So ESAR grant is helping us with that.
Right.
Um, and that about covers our grants. Well, then we go into the state grants. We have the MEKO grant, um, Comprehensive School Health Grant, which is, uh, DPH. And Kelly LaBumbarde, our nurse leader, oversees that grant. Um, she has been able to cover a lot of the PPE that's needed through, for this COVID. For her, the, the nurses throughout the school, so we're very thankful for that. Um, we go into the private grants. We still are expending down those, uh, project lead-the-way grants at the high school in Maple Shade. Not much there. I recently saw some purchase orders come through. So, you know, I feel that the grants are, um, are in good shape and expending down where, where they should be. Does anyone have any questions on any of the grants? Okay. Um, on the bottom section is your revolving accounts. And the way revolving accounts work, I'll just remind you that they roll over from one year into the next. And so there's your carry-forward balances in that first column, uh, that were carried over from last year into this year. Um, you know, the transportation, as you can see, was extremely low, um, for obvious reasons, because we had to reimburse folks, um, because transportation didn't happen the full year. Um, as you make, make your way down this list here, we've got the athletic revolving account, um, the athletic stadium rentals, the school rental accounts, the mobile technology the mobile technology insurance account, which has a very healthy balance there. So we're always working with IT to make sure that our students have what they need for technology. And I think we had discussed that, you know, as the year goes on, we will, you know, be looking at this a little more in depth to make sure that it's, you know, we're charging appropriately and if we can maybe do do anything different. So we'll keep an eye on that and see what happens on the third quarter with that. The school gift accounts, tuition revolving. So this one is, we have a little reduction in revenue this year because of preschool. We usually bring in some, a little bit of funds there. So we are down about $30,000 with the tuition revolving account. And the athletic revolving, I believe we're down, might be another 30,000 there as as well because of the reduction in in revenues. You know, the the athletic fees. Transportation, so this one here, this one is a big one because we were not able to charge anyone for transportation. So that is at a price tag of about $150,000 that we typically bring in, depending on on the ridership. And this will definitely affect our budget. And, you know, some of these accounts where we have positive balances is how we're going to end up netting out because this is usually one of the sources that helps us cover all of those transportation expenditures. And lastly, school lunch. You can see typically school lunch has a very, very good, healthy balance. Last year to this year is not so healthy. It's still got a positive balance. It's a little behind on its revenue coming in from the state and the federal government because the whole claiming process just takes a little bit of time. So there is some, you know, lateness in in that there. What we have had to do to help school lunch is, we talked about that CBRF grant. CBRF grant helped fund a lot of the expenditures that that Lori Paul has now with this grab, grab and go lunch that that we have. It's definitely more expensive to to get these containers and so, and she had to pay her staff more. So all in all, we're we're working with her partnering. The ESER grant is also going to be covering some of those expenditures as well for for school lunch. Does anyone have any questions on any of the revolving accounts?
So Pam, with the the decrease in revenues specifically this year, you imagine some of the grants potentially can make it up. Are any of them glaring at us that it's going to produce a problem either this year or next year because of the lower revenue?
Well, transportation is definitely one that, I mean, that's that's a high, you know, high amount. And the way that the grant works, you can't just, you can't just put 150,000 from the grant into, you know, it doesn't cover loss, loss of revenue. So you have to kind of go about it in a different, in a different way. I think we're going to be okay. I'm going to continue to monitor all of this. I think because of having, thank goodness, the grants to help us through this this difficult time because we certainly needed a lot of support staff put in place that we were not planning on. I mean, who knew that we would all be here, you know, 10 months later? I mean, I certainly thought that we would be far past this and and here we are. So I do hear about some additional funding coming down the road in the near future. It's supposed to happen any, any, any time now. They kept saying February. So February is now here, so I'm hoping maybe at our next meeting, I'll have even additional funding to be able to to help. And maybe that would even help us into the the next fiscal year because we know we're going to have our challenges in that area with all of these, you know, socially emotional needs of of the little tykes. And and just just this whole, this whole pandemic situation is going to bring some different support issues, I think, in that that we're going to need to deal with. So I thank you all very much. I will keep monitoring the accounts for you. And again, right now, I I think we're doing fine. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Okay. That is this year's financial report. We're going to talk a little bit about the budget development process for FY22.
Okay, in your packets, we gave you some preliminary information. As Mrs. Blair had indicated, in the second quarter report, our budget this year is 31,594,089 excuse me, 31,594,089 dollars for the year. As we've done the last couple of years, we just tried to give you a breakdown of what increases would look like at 1%, 2%, you know, 3%, whatever it may be, as well as give you an idea as we roll all groups forward, what that level of, or what that cost of level services looks like. And so that's the, those preliminary numbers in the middle of the page there. And we obviously are negotiating with our teachers' union and we're also negotiating or will be negotiating with our food services union. And the teachers' negotiations formally start on the 25th, although we've been working with the teachers' union really since April on any number of things as we try to move and solve different pandemic, different challenges from the pandemic. But now we're really focusing our attention on how we develop a another three year contract for our teachers and doing the same with our food services. One thing that we've discussed as we look at, you know, our budget process last year, where we did make a number of reductions, we just want to remind all of you as this is something that certainly we're discussing with the leadership team, that we did reduce in a number of areas. The high school reduced the position of assistant principal, also an instructional technology specialist. Burchland had a foreign language teacher for a position that was reduced and a literacy support teacher that was reduced. And we also then reduced the spot of the Maple Shade and Mountain View academic coach. So as we're working with the leadership team, obviously, these positions are on their minds, but I've also asked them to look at areas where we feel we really need to have growth to better support all of our students. And I guess one of the silver linings, if we can say that about the pandemic, is that we have more or less reinvented everything we do. And so that does give you a different perspective as you look to move forward. And so there are things certainly that we're feeling that are going really well and could be beneficial as we move into more, if we can call it, regular operations, which we hope to be in as we start the next school year. So these discussions are going on. We are trying to really look at how we can identify those areas for growth and what will be the needs. And I know all of you have discussed this a number of times as we've gone through, not only last year, but the summer and the fall. You know, we have to look at what our needs are going to be as we all come out of sort of COVID operations and move into more regular operations. You know, we know that there are going to be deficits in learning. And we know that there's a big piece that we have to continue to define around social and emotional support. Because if we're not supporting our students socially and emotionally, they're not in a position to really make effective progress. And so there's two pieces to that. And so those are the discussions right now that are going on with the leadership team regarding things that are going on in their buildings and or departments. I think you're muted, Greg.
We have a scheduled meeting with Town Council. Is that next week, I believe?
We do on February 9th.
And we'll be just discussing preliminary thoughts and ideas on the budget and then we'll continue to move forward from there.
Right.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay.
I have one question, sorry. When we think about the grant funds that you mentioned, Pam, that will be coming sometime this month, can some of those funds also be expended for purchases that can be used potentially next academic year, whether it's social emotional curriculum supports or additional, you know, materials that might be necessary to support with learning loss that's occurred?
That is my understanding. The the literature that I've seen, I I believe it's going to be in 2023 that the grant is going to end. So that's very promising.
So that might be another spot that we can also tap into in order to ensure that we have what we need not only to finish out this academic year, but to put us in a place to meet with success at the onset of the next academic year.
Exactly. Sounds like a great plan.
Back to normal someday. We're getting there. Okay, good discussion. Thank you. And we'll move forward on to our next item of business, which is the school committee meeting dates for next year.
So in your package, you you see a breakdown basically of meetings throughout the year, starting with that July meeting. We didn't designate what day in July folks would like to schedule for a reorganization meeting. We've done it on July 1st. We've, you know, also done it a little bit later into July. So that's certainly the committee's option and prerogative to select the date that works for everybody. And generally, the last probably three or four years, we've looked at that August meeting somewhere around, in this case, the 23rd, just as that final update. And here's what's going to be going on in the next week. Generally, that next week, we have our new staff orientation and then possible professional development workshops. And then we move into that final week that's late August, early September. That's when we have convocation and after convocation, students arrive the very next day. So we've tried to break out the meetings in such a way that we're taking into account not only summertime and vacations, and hopefully we're all able to do that this year, but also looking at how we work around school vacation weeks and so forth.
Any concerns from the committee on the dates laid out?
I just want to do the reorganization maybe before the 4th of July.
Okay.
What's the first? This year, so we'll have some opportunities. You know, you've got that Thursday and Friday, we can talk about it as it gets closer, I would suggest.
Yeah, so we have the first and the second, we'll choose for as we get closer and we see a brief schedule, we can schedule that.
I mean, it's something we can probably do in the morning because it's only like a 10 or 15 minute meeting. It's not really, you know, there's nothing else on the agenda. You can probably bang.
And that's correct. There's nothing else on the agenda.
Hey, I can't promise anything, Beth.
Great year, you never know.
That's right.
It is a special year this year. I'll admit that.
That's right. Okay, with that, then I would entertain a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 meeting calendar as laid out.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill.
A second.
Second by Beth. Any other discussion? Hearing not all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, and we have our final item on the agenda. It's a memorandum of understanding with the Unit A Teacher Union. I don't have it in front of me.
So this is the MOU that we discussed in the executive session on Monday. It is specific to developing the Building Health and Safety Committee. So each building can have a committee that's looking at their safety protocols and any other challenges that may come up as we're looking to ensure everyone in all of our buildings ensure their safety. And also looks at the transition network as well.
And Gordon, we'll we'll get updates as those committees organize and start to meet. It would be helpful if we could funnel up the information that they're putting together so that we can all be on the same page and. Okay, any other questions on that? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the MOU.
And do we have, I don't have the actual paper, so should I just do, I move to.
What's the date on that?
It was retroactive to February 1st, I believe.
February 1st, okay. I'm to accept the MOU as written, a retroactive back to February 1st.
Excellent. Motion's made by Beth.
My second.
Second by Bill. Any other discussion? All is in favor, please.
Sorry, I was just going to say that there are parts of the MOU that I am in favor of, but other parts that I am not. So since we cannot vote on it in segments, that I just want that to be clear.
Okay. So all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries four to one. Thank you very much. And with that, I believe we were at the conclusion of our meeting. If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bill.
A second.
Second by Antonella, even though she was on mute.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Mackey, for coordinating the Neil Kat side. And all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion to adjourn carries five to zero. Want to thank you all for your time and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.